Good evening. I would like to welcome everyone to the proceedings of the Grand Rapids Public Schools Board of Education. It is Monday, December 4. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and the right to life.
Ms. Shotkey, can you please take the roll call?
Yes, good evening. Dr. Flores.
Present.
Ms. Grant.
Present.
Ms. Lewis.
Present.
Reverend Mathias.
Present.
Mr. Ross.
Present.
Ms. Shotkey here, Ms. Slade.
Present.
Dr. Baker.
Here.
And President Fahlb.
Present.
We're all here.
Do I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
No motion.
Support?
Could we correct the date? December 4, 2018 is not...
Oh.
Almost there.
With approval for the agenda with the correction of the correct year.
No motion.
Support.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. A few. First on our agenda are our celebrations.
Dr. Fahlb and members of the board, I'd like to ask Matthew transferred, where are you, Matthew? Matthew, to come forward, thank you.
Evening Superintendent Neal, President Fahlb, and members of the board. It's my honor tonight to welcome these two presidents of local Kiwanis chapters to share this celebration of these amazing dictionaries that you've been given and how all of the third graders in GRPS will receive ones.
Wow, nice.
So please welcome Gloria Canjolosi and John Figari from our local Kiwanis close.
Sure. I've been involved with Kiwanis a long time and I had never had the opportunity to be here to do this, so this is really a pleasure. A few years ago, somebody said to me, "Dictionaries, do they need dictionaries?" You know, with Google and being able to search. And I said, "Yeah, I think so." And as I look at the dictionary, it became apparent to me that, you know, there, as Matthew pointed out, there, first they learn to read, now they're reading to learn. So they also learn, I think the big thing is they learn this is a resource and they learn what a resource is. So I'm very proud to be part of this and just happy that we can contribute. I would also say that I've been very encouraged by the results that you've produced with our children. It's wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening. As a former teacher in the Grand Rapids Public School, I'm especially pleased that our Kiwanian group can give this dictionary to third graders, knowing the need for reading and especially now in the third grade program. As you see from your book, this book is not only just a dictionary and definitions and pronunciation, it's as well a gazetteer with maps and hit social studies and the longest word in the dictionary, which pleases the children to no end. And it, you know, it is a book, a resource that will stay next to their bed, hopefully, for many years, all the way through community college that they'll take with them. We are very grateful for the help of Steven Speka, who helped, you know, distribute these to all the schools and our Grand Valley partners as well in putting this together and presenting this to the Grand Rapids Public Schools. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
By the way, your colleague comes every year and he gives us one and then he takes them away from us. Now if you're going to keep him from doing that this year...
Can I get his purse? That's my name in it. They are so upset that she gets another one. I don't know. Honestly, I think it's just in the secretaries, so they're like, "She needs a dictionary." Next on our agenda is our report from our student representative, so Mr. Santino.
So our winter sports have kicked off and they're going great as of right now. Ottawa's girls are 2-0, they're undefeated so far, which is great. Wrestling, basketball, bowling, and swimming has also started, so, you know, rooting for them. DECA testing is coming up really fast. DECA is a business competition that takes place in Detroit if you medal. And we had plenty of students medal last year, so we're looking, we're looking pretty good. Hopefully, we'll get to go this year as well. And our speed networking that's going on at our school this Thursday, we have about two dozen professionals, local professionals, come in to speak to us and you get to talk to them for like two minutes each and kind of elevator speech type stuff. And at the end, there's a prize. You get an award and a kind gift card of $200 for first place, which is, you know, accepted maybe possibly. And so I want to thank Mr. Frost and Ms. Cook for making it possible and everyone else that helped out. Really appreciate it. It's a really good practice for public speaking and, you know, networking is really important for our future, so thank you.
Nice. That's great. That's happy.
Thank you, President Fahlb. So our assistant principal, Ms. Ma, helped facilitate a close-up trip that about 50 students are participating. And just last week, we received a $350 scholarship for each student and we're continuing to fundraise through selling candy and other events. Another thing is the Business Professional of America has this year included a couple of GRPS schools and some of the competitions they're participating in is informational concept and extemporaneous speech, including myself. And three of, two of our city students have became leadership roles in the Mayor's Youth Council and one of our students have became, from union, has also got a leadership role.
That's awesome. Thank you. Any questions for these guys? Very nice. Thank you. Next, we have public comment for board agenda items.
We have no comment this evening.
Secretary's report.
Great. Board members that serve on the Policy Committee, please note that our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, December 12, 1:00 p.m. in Room 101 here at the Administration Building. Also delighted to tell you that the District Athletics Department presents East versus West Battle of the I-96 Holiday Hoops Classic. This year's basketball games will take place on Saturday, December 16, at Ottawa Hills with the following competitions. At noon, Detroit-Southeastern versus Wayland Union. 1:45 p.m., Lansing-Sexton versus Rockford. 3:30 p.m., Lansing versus Benton Harbor. 5:15 p.m., Mount Clemens versus Grand Rapids Union. And 7:00 p.m., Detroit-Henry Ford versus Ottawa Hills. Admission is $10 to cover all games. For more information, please contact the Ottawa Hills High School Athletic Office at (616) 819-2879 or email H-A-R-R-I-S Harris M-A-R at GRPS.org. I am also delighted to tell you about the Community Literacy Summit. I hope that you will join us and the Literacy Center of West Michigan for its sixth annual Community Literacy Summit with keynote speaker, Mr. Claudio Sanchez, NPR Education Correspondent. This year's theme is Reading by Third Grade: Our Shared Opportunity, Our Shared Responsibility. The summit will take place on January 25 from 7:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Grand Valley State University's L.V. Eberhart Center located at 301 Fulton Street West. It's $25 for general admission and $15 for students. To purchase tickets, please go online to literacycenterwm.org/summit or contact the Literacy Center at (616) 459-5151. Well, Grand Rapids Public Schools is accepting applications for all its theme schools and centers of innovation, including our new Academy of Teaching and Learning. The application deadline is January 31. Applications may be done online at apply.grps.org or a film, excuse me, form may be picked up, goodness, from any GRPS school or Student Services and returned to Student Services at the GRPS Administration Building, right here at 1331 Franklin Southeast. And lastly, the Grand Rapids Public Schools Administration Building is participating in the Salvation Army's Angel Tree Toy Drive. Please feel free to stop in during our regular business hours from 7:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. to deliver new unwrapped toys. This collection will run through 12 noon on December 18. The Salvation Army's goal is to collect toys for 25,000 children across West Michigan this holiday season. And that's my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Shotkey? All right. Community chair updates, Reverend Mathias.
Well, we met November 21 for our Academic Achievement Committee in which we centered around the teacher evaluation and that process that we have been improving. I think, I would say that we had a really robust and healthy conversation about how the evaluation system is being implemented and how it is affecting our teachers of no... One of the things that we saw was that teachers who were in the appeal process, really it went from in 2015, 1415, from 36 teachers who had an appeal down to three in 2016, 17. So clearly, that process where teachers are able to be heard is being implemented. The other thing is that we saw an increase in the number of teachers, or at least it was reported to us, that the number of teachers that went from minimally effective and effective to effective to highly effective, that number went up by 16 percent. So again, I think it speaks to the district really wanting our teachers to feel like there's a place to grow, there's a place to stay, there's a place to mature, so we're pretty excited about that.
That's great. Dr. Flores?
A question of, Mr. Mathias. I read with interest the area of evaluation preparation that anyone who participates in observations will need to be certified. But certified, apparently to the description, refers to certified in a process that is training conducted by the Cambridge Education Group, not teacher certified. And I wonder if anyone within the committee or within this board is concerned about the fact that teachers are evaluated oftentimes by people who have never taught, who are not certified as educators in teaching. And I liken to the example to someone evaluating a heart surgeon or an attorney in terms of the processes that they use to perform the work that they do at an effective level and, or highly effective level. And while I'm not on that committee, I didn't go for public comment or anything, but it continues to be kind of a thorn in my side as a teacher, a former teacher, and certainly as a lifelong educator because, you know, there is the potential for coming back if us retired teachers should we elect to. However, I think that the field of criticism about the lack of consistency in that particular point and the use of the Danielson framework, that even Charlotte Danielson, who developed that framework, said it is, it was never intended to be a checklist to check off whether a teacher is effective or not for evaluative purposes. And there has been much to say and much to do in activism around this country over that issue, that in fact, some 3,000 educators in 48 states were very highly critical of the changes in the evaluation system using primarily the Danielson framework as a basis for evaluating teachers' effectiveness, so much so that teachers have fled this field of education, of the classroom, including, you know, I'll say myself, for the experiences that I had, having less than certified administrators conducting evaluations of my performance. And I think that whenever we can run teachers out and make sure that no new teachers come into the field using the instruments that we do for evaluation, we have a problem. And I think that, you know, we're realizing that locally, we're realizing it at the state level and at the national level. We need to make sure that evaluation is a fair process and that we are, that we're using administrators that have taught, and if they haven't taught, then they ought to. They ought to go in the classroom. If you haven't played baseball and you're on the team and you've never been on the field, sorry, you know, do you really know what it takes to be a good baseball player? And I put it in very simplistic terms, but, you know, I would hope that we could do better in evaluating how we evaluate teachers.
Well, as a member...
Thank you, Dr. Flores.
Excuse me.
Ms. Lewis?
As a member of the committee, I have to plead ignorance because I just assumed that certified, met certified teachers, so I, I'm totally ignorant of that or else I am misinformed, but I do support your position as far as evaluation's concerned because it is a very delicate subject and it always has been, you know. Somebody's spent a lifetime in the classroom, you know, having somebody come in with lots of preconceived ideas about who you are and, you know, how good of a teacher you are. And I don't, I would say that 99.9 percent of the teachers we have in Grand Rapids Public School probably felt the same way I do, is that you're here and you really want to do a good job and you really want people to recognize that you're doing a good job and for your principal and the administration to say, "You're doing a good job." You know, somebody said, "It's not about the money." Obviously, it's not about the money when you're a teacher. And so it has to be about something else. And I think what it's about is, you know, the connection with the kids and also the recognition that what you do is so very important to kids and to society and that those of us in these positions have to make sure that the teachers in the classroom, you know, we say this, but what can we really do to make them feel appreciated? And I support whatever you might suggest.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Are there any other questions for Reverend Mathias?
I'd like to just say, I think that we have Academic Achievement Committee that, you know, we're hearing the impression of the evaluation process. And so, you know, I'm getting the impression that we don't know whether or not it's a fair process. I think that the board has spent a lot of time looking at the process. Reverend Mathias was on when we initiated this process. So I think that I'd like to move forward that the committee and that the board tends to think that we have a fair evaluation system and then if we don't, we should discuss it further. But I get, but, I mean, as evidenced by the data that you just presented, it sounds like the evaluation is fair, is typical of the way evaluations are done and, you know, I just think it's important to have, to have a knowledge of what the evaluation system is and that the board backs it and that we can't be second guessing, actually even a committee meeting here. I'm not suggesting, Dr. Flores, that it's not fair to raise these questions. I think it is fair to raise these questions, but I do think that we should not go forward given the kind of ambiguity that we have about our own system, about valuation. So this is the board's, you know, this is, the board is backing what happens in this district. I think it's important that we understand the evaluation method and perceive with it. We spent a lot of time when it was first implemented and we, again, it seems to be well-received in relationship to the way evaluation systems tend to be critiqued in the past.
Dr. Fahlb. And we are, Jen and Christian and I are going to have a meeting with, I'm not sure who's going to run the meeting, but the three of us are brand new as far as teacher evaluation is concerned, and so somebody's going to go through the whole thing with us and so we might be more informed. But I do know that even in our legislative platform here, we have mentioned about teacher evaluations and, you know, that it's a problem. It's, it's a problem all over the country and the state that teachers are leaving and I think one of the reasons why a lot of young folks leave is, you know, not the money. It's, they need to be appreciated and I'm not suggesting that we don't appreciate them. I'm just saying that maybe we just need to do more, that's all.
Question of information, if I could. You've indicated that the board, Dr. Baker, has approved the evaluation system. Perhaps that happened before I came aboard here. I'm not aware of a vote taken by this board to approve the improvements that have been made to the evaluation system. I would expect, you know, some dissonance on your part. It seems to be a pattern with anything that I suggest. I would ask you to consider whether or not you would be, you would be content being evaluated as a professor at Fair State University by an individual who is less prepared.
I think it'd be helpful to have clarification on what the process for adoption of a teacher evaluation system is and what the board's role is in that, so that we have clarity on that. I mean, is that something we do wrong or we can revisit at another time? Because I think it raises a good point that we need to know what our role is in relationship to it and, you know, have an opportunity to either reaffirm and support it or, you know, ask for some revisions if the timing is appropriate and if our role in relationship to it is appropriate, so.
For clar... Actually, I think Reverend Mathias...
Yeah, what I would, what I would further say, and again, you can, you can read the minutes of our, I could make a committee. We even had the president of the Teachers Union really comment on how it, how it was receiving, how it was going. And I think, again, it's an effort to have a dialogue about what that looks like. In terms of what we heard, the evaluators are teacher certified and they have gone through some of that process, so.
I mean, it's hard for me because I've been...
That's not accurate. That's not accurate.
I've been exposed to all of a very rigorous, extensive, iterative process about developing a robust system in relationship to legislative requirements. And so I don't, I think there's been very varying degrees of board exposure and engagement to it. Really pleased to see that you guys are taking time to educate yourselves on it. Great that it's at the, at the Academic Achievement Committee. I'm not sure what more is needed at this point or the timing of it.
Dr. Fahlb, may I just say one more thing? I believe in our legislative program, it talks something about teacher evaluation, doesn't it, in terms of the local districts having more control over the types and the way we go about evaluating teachers? So if some of these things are prescribed by law, then we're stuck with, this is what we will do. But obviously, if local control and if we have more say in what we can do and not do, I think, you know, I would like to work with the teachers and with the administration and everyone to, just to make sure that, you know, people feel that it's fair. And that's important, I think. As a former educator, I know how important it was for me to receive good evaluations, even though it might not have been from the person that cared to receive it. But, you know, and obviously, I don't think we can expect that the president of the union can just come here and make statements about all the teachers because obviously, as a former union member, I know as a building rep that I heard from teachers when they had something to complain about. And so obviously, that is exactly what the president said when she talked to us, is that she can't speak for all the teachers. She knows about the ones who are unhappy, so.
I think conversation would be more productive if it was in the context of an informed discussion of what, you know, what was legislated, what the process has been, what has been put into it. And I think at that point and what, what the areas of change could be within it, the areas of revision, I think a more productive conversation could happen in that context. So whether, Ms. Slade?
Well, I think, I think your point, help me if I'm wrong, it's not about the system or the evaluation instrument, it's about who does the evaluation. I think that's your point.
That's number one, and then the other, the use of the, continued use of the Danielson rubric as, as that 50 percent, you know, evaluative tool. When the research is showing, even, even the person who invented that says that's not what it was used for and really is trying to advocate for the change. And then the, the reaction that we've had from teachers all over the country. I, I think that we need more data. I mean, one might say here at the board that, that no one without teacher certification is evaluating teachers. Well, how true is that statement? I asked at one point from this administration for a list of the deans of students and throughout the district to see which deans of students were involved in evaluation. I asked for athletic directors, who oftentimes are assistant principals, who have not been in the classroom, in some cases. Some have, some haven't. And then, you know, some of our administrators have not been in the classroom, who do not have teacher certification. And so again, I liken it to the example of you're evaluating a surgeon or evaluating another professional, either a lawyer or a professor or whatever, and you're doing so without the prerequisite skills of that profession. I just think it's an unfair process and it's one that we need to protect our system from. And I think it becomes, what do you call it, capricious and what was the other term?
Arbitrator.
Arbitrator, thank you. Arbitrator and capricious, that whole part of the law that says, you know, it's an unfair process.
So rather than deliberate this now?
I'd like to make, first of all, I want to make it clear that I, what I, I'm not sure what I said, but what I, what I meant to say is that the board reviewed the process and we reviewed the process at length as it was being developed and it was presented to the full board. I do support the board being knowledgeable of the way it's currently implemented. I do suggest that making charges of it being unfair, given perceptions of the past, is unfair and that we should be careful in making charges of unfair, especially as, it's my impression that all of the things that you were asked for, including teacher involvement in the process, did occur. And so we do not know actually even from your speculation whether or not teachers find it is unfair. We should understand industry standards, we should understand the way things would be done, and we should understand whether or not people feel that it's an adequate evaluation tool in the district. It sounds like that was the conversation you had at the Academic Achievement Committee meeting, so in terms of where we go in the future, but I do think it's important that we all understand it and support the process that we have or raise questions about it in a way to address it.
Perhaps, given the level of interest, it could be an agenda item for a work session with a more robust presentation to the entire board.
Agree.
And that'd be an appropriate place to debate it, Reverend. Okay, great. Any other questions for Reverend Mathias?
And that's why we have academic committee meetings.
Right.
That we can deliberate. So this is good.
Thank you. Dr. Baker?
We actually just had our Finance Committee meeting, so it's easy to remember our conversation with the purchasing contract, which we'll go through later, which includes our moving forward with the construction at City and some other projects, which I believe Ken might, Ken or Larry might tell us about as we vote on that. But the other thing that we began a conversation about that will, that we will ask the full board to consider for a work session is just a conversation about how local hiring, contract bidding process, purchasing, et cetera, happens and how it can, how we can look at policies that might allow us to be more responsive to the communities that we are locating in, especially in the case of building new buildings and neighborhoods and whether or not persons in those neighborhoods get the benefit from the economic development and the jobs that come across. So we had a really good discussion about what is in place and we're looking to kind of move forward with what we, as a, as a board, can suggest for better or, if it's possible, more responsiveness to the community.
Questions for Dr. Baker? Other committee members? All right, great. Next, we have the Superintendent's report.
Dr. Fahlb, I'd like to ask John Hemholt to come forward, please.
Chairman Superintendent, President Fahlb, members of the board. Tonight, before you, you have your legislative platform. I know at a previous work session, we had talked through it, I had shared that we were going to update it. What you have here is nearly identical to what you approved last year. We did move a few things around and, and establish kind of those top legislative priorities, which are on the first few pages, and I, if you'd like, I can walk through those and take any questions about your... overall platform. As Chris Glass has said, this is probably one of the most comprehensive platforms that any school district has, and it's something that we're very proud of. Some of these issues that are in the other category, these are issues that may not come up again, but we wanted to maintain that kind of for posterity. There were, like, for example, the all-day kindergarten. That was a huge negotiation on our part to try to, you know, make sure that we could continue the practices as we were, so we left that language in here. Even though we've solved that problem, in the event that these term-limited lawmakers come back in a few years and decide to bring it up, we have that record to go back to. But what we have done in, in setting these priorities, you'll see those, the first few pages, looking at the, the school aid formula. We've had lots of studies recently between the governor's 21st Century Commission and the legislature's independent study, and now the Kellogg Foundation. There's more and more momentum growing around updating and changing the way we fund our schools. We, we do not fund based on the true cost of meeting the academic needs of each and every child, regardless of age, income, native, language, ability. We, study after study shows that we are underfunded by at least $1,200 per pupil, and, and even more than that with English-language learners, special ed, and at-risk youth. And it's our hope that this groundwork has been laid for the legislature to take a very serious look at that. The next big issue is the critical shortage list. We know we have a teacher crisis and a shortage list, and it's something that we were able to get them to reauthorize it a few years ago. There's a sunset coming up on that current legislation, and we're looking for some more flexibility.
May I ask, it says here, supports lowering the requirements for substitute teachers in relaxing barriers so districts have an adequate talent pool. How low do we plan to go as far as?
Well, we, we don't want to go too low. The, the West Michigan Talent Triangle, and, and I'm looking at Sharon Pitts, because she may know this a little bit more, but I know, I think right now it's 90, and we're, we're advocating for going as low as 60. Is it, is it hours? That's what I thought. Hour credits.
So, that would be like finishing a sophomore year in college, about?
Associate's degree.
Like an associate's degree.
Would they have to have one, or just the 60 hours?
And so, again, I mean, we're just looking for the maximum level of flexibility. You know, we're not looking for just any individual to be in our classrooms, but because we're having such a struggle right now, we also know that being able to bring back those veteran retired teachers, especially those who've been with the system, who, who really can jump in feet-first and really hit the ground running, this would give that maximum flexibility to do so. The other that's, that's recent is banning both open carry and concealed carry in the schools. As you know, there's legislation right now that seeks to eliminate concealed carry in schools, but would provide for open carry in schools. So, so someone can come in cowboy style if they've taken a few extra classes on concealed carry. We say just no, no weapons, no guns in schools. Voke Ed is getting a whole nother push. There, there's this new coalition, Michigan Career Pathways Alliance. The legislation was just introduced this week. We are still waiting to get the details on that. Our key message on this is we support this, but it should not be another unfunded mandate. You can't just keep piling on, on top of an already very large pile. The exempt from the headly rollback, this is something on our non-Homestead millage. You know, voters were very confused because it looked like they were voting for a tax increase, when in fact, it technically wasn't. It was for the building in that cushion in the event of a headly rollback. This is highly unlikely to get much action, but because it's fresh in the minds of voters and in lawmakers, we wanted to put it in there. School vouchers is getting talked about with these new education flex accounts. The A to F grading system is considered by some to be a top priority, and something we are, at this point, we oppose an A to F system, and, and so, we anticipate there to be action. Pre-Labor Day school start and the school calendar reform, you know, we are already, we've already received a waiver. We're saying we should not need to have to go through these hoops, that there should be a provision for a pre-Labor Day school start and have much more local control over the school calendar. Charter school transparency, accountability, and reform, and millages, right now, there's an effort to provide for charter schools to be part of a local enhancement millage. As you might recall, we passed in May, an enhancement millage. The charter schools are vying to be included as part of that, and it has some legs to it, so we're going to continue to watch and monitor that. And then, of course, the federal budget. That's something that if it was approved as introduced, it would have a devastating impact with more than $6 million in cuts to Grand Rapids Public Schools alone. So, that's kind of it in a nutshell. We do have our legislative lunch coming up this Monday, from 11:30 to 1:00, at Gerald R. Ford Academic Center. Our hope is to have approval so that we can talk in detail with lawmakers next Monday about their, about your new and updated legislative platform.
May I ask one more question, Mr. Hemholt? I want to ask about this special ed, education, seclusion, and restraint. I know when schools started this fall, that it was changed to the teacher and the kids have to leave the room under certain circumstances for certain kids with emotional problems or whatever. And I'm wondering what exactly it is that we are looking for as our position?
Well, and the key here is that it's looking at creating a clear, uniform policy for seclusion and restraint. This legislation has already been moving, and I'm looking back toward Laura a little bit in the event that she might want to chime in on this. There was to be a package of bills that Lieutenant Governor Brian Kelly was working on. The first set that came out was specific to seclusion and restraint. The reason we moved this to the back is that is already kind of really off the legislative table at this point, but we anticipate another round of new recommendations with a legislative package of bills around special ed.
So, that initial instructions that teachers received, and I'm not talking about Grand Rapids Public Schools, I'm just, you know, from my own friends and so on, very specific, that is no longer what teachers have to do? Has that been changed, amended, or?
I'm going to look to my colleagues for an assist on this one. I'm not, I'm not that deep in the weeds on, on this.
Good evening. The, yes, the state, Michigan State Board of Education came out with a policy, some guidelines on how to implement the new law on the emergency use of seclusion and restraint. We have conducted two days of a three-hour training for all school-based staff, because they have to have a higher level of training. We are going to implement our online training for the rest of us. Every staff member is going to get a level of training. We're getting those folks in the central office who are not school-based, we're going to get an exposure level, sort of online course, but everyone that is in a school. And this is not just for special education students. That's very important. This is for any student that needs to be restrained in any way, there's a proper way to do it. And so, we have implemented at least an initial three-hour training, or we continuing to provide training and support as needed.
Is, is, is that policy something that we continue to support, or that we would just as soon have it adjusted?
No, this policy we really support, because it does provide a real clear boundaries and guidelines and criteria. And we really support that because at least now, people know very clearly from the state's perspective, you know, there's the law part that came out, but then the state Board of Education, we're really hired to create a comprehensive, I think it's like, many, many pages of guidelines on how to do it and exactly when you should, what's the proper techniques, most importantly, how do you report it, so that everyone knows the boundaries and guidelines.
So, the idea of a student who's, you know, maybe acting out and can't be restrained, the idea of the teacher and the kids leaving the room, is that something that happens? Or is that something very rare that happens, or?
Have you understood the question?
Well, I read the policy in the fall, and my nephew's a teacher, and he said that, you know, he has, he has had in the past, kids who needed to be restrained, and in the past, he would call the office and the administrator, and he would solve the problem by taking, picking the kid up and carrying him out, but that, that was no longer possible, that the kids and the teacher had to leave and leave the kid alone, and?
Well, I mean, it's, it's complex, and it's a case-by-case situation.
So, that's very rare that that would happen?
Well, yes. I mean, you don't pick kids up and drag them out of the classroom under any circumstances. There's a way. We provided CPI training before and ways to properly restrain children, because not only could you hurt the child, you as an employee could also get hurt. And so, it's really important as a safety mechanism for not just the child, but for the employees, that they understand the appropriate way to deal with students when they're having particular issues. And it is rare when you have to actually seclude or physically restrain a student. And that's why we try to, well, it's rare when you should, let me just put it like that, and that's why the level of training is really important, because there's liabilities, not only physical liabilities in terms of your physical safety, but there are legal liabilities on behalf of the, for the district. So, training is really important, but, and that's why we have instituted the three-hour training. So, it's, you know, you, I can't, it's very difficult, and a lawyer in me will never allow me to answer that kind of broad question, but, so it is a case-by-case kind of analysis. But teachers have to be really highly trained, because you have to make very quick decisions under stressful situations. And so, the more training and the more practice you get at doing that, the better your instincts will be as to how to properly do it. So, that's just the, the bottom line.
Thank you. Other questions for our legislative platform? I just want to say, we do have a very comprehensive platform. I think many districts don't have one, and I think it's fantastic that we take leadership on it, because the policies at the state do impact our children and families, and we are the trustees for the community. So, the extent to which we are taking a position on them, engaging with our lawmakers, and I think it's, it's great. I think it's great leadership from this board and administration, so thank you for your work on it.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is an action item, approving the legislative platform. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any deliberation, concerns? Please take the vote.
Dr. Flores?
No.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Schottke, yes. Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
President of all?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the purchasing agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
Or?
Any discussions regarding the purchasing agenda? Seeing none, please take the vote.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Schottke, yes. Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
President of all?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we have the consent agenda, approval. A motion for approval, please?
So moved.
Or?
Vote.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Schottke, yes. Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
And President of all?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I see no discussion items. Do we have public comment for agenda items?
We do not.
Agenda and non-agenda? Agenda and non-agenda? Superintendent's comments?
No comment, Dr. Flores.
Mr. Ross?
No comment.
Dr. Flores?
Yeah, I feel compelled to explain my no vote on, on the legislative platform. I do not support reducing the requirements for, for substitute teachers that work in our district. I think we need to be upping our game and qualifications for, for teachers that we put in front of our students. They were a minority, majority district, one that has a disparity in, in achievement rates based on race and gender. And I think that, you know, we, we send the wrong message there, so explanation given.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes, I do. I would like to thank Pastor Goldson from the AME Church for inviting me to celebrate Thanksgiving with his congregation. It was really a wonderful experience. I took Kayla with me, and it was to highlight all of the educators that are in the congregation. It was really a nice event. Also, I'm very grateful to be able to attend the Girls on the Run luncheon last week and to hear the person who started the whole concept of Girls on the Run there talking. And it is, Girls on the Run is a program that's for fifth and, fourth and fifth graders in the Grand Rapids Public Schools, but all over, not just in Grand Rapids, not just in Michigan, but all over, and just empowering girls to know their strengths and so on. And then, today's event, I'd like to thank Ms. Schottke and Dr. Baker for organizing and supporting the Innovation Summit that we attended, all about making schools work for all kinds of kids and how we can implement programs that will support our kids as they make decisions about what they want to do with the rest of their life, and knowing that college isn't for everybody, and so, if it's not for everybody, what are their other choices? It was, it was a very good program, and I was very glad I attended.
Ms. Slade?
No comment.
Reverend Mathias?
No comment.
Ms. Schottke?
Just to, to echo what Ms. Lewis said about this morning's educational workforce summit, just really grateful and want to say thank you to my colleague, Dr. Baker, and Dr. Gorman, and also Kelly in the Communications Office, who helped put on this event this morning. I was delighted to, to have the opportunity to bring together community organizations, higher education institutions, of course, K-12, GRPS, and the ISD, and elected officials, so we can have a, a conversation together about how we help students, like Ms. Lewis said, make decisions about their future career pathways, and really to celebrate students where they are and guide them as they make choices about their future, and celebrate all post-secondary career pathways. So, just a huge thank you to GRPS for supporting Dr. Baker and I as we put together this summit.
You know, I want to echo what Jen had to say, because, thank you, Catherine, for your, but if two board members pulled something off, you know there was a lot of staff that was involved. So, anyway, it was really a nice event. But really, it was like introducing, Teresa's this morning is that really the GRPS way is to get lots of people who've forgotten the boundaries of, of their industry and came together to work on solving problems. And I'm excited that tomorrow morning is going to be a big announcement about our academy for teaching and learning.
No comment.
No, I just want to echo that as well. Dr. Gorman and Ms. Schottke, beautiful opening comments, and I couldn't stay for the whole thing, but was really excited to see, and really looking forward tomorrow for the announcement on the Teacher Academy, talking about building our own. It's awesome, so, thank you. All right, meeting adjourned.